Good evening, folks. It's seven o'clock. I'm going to call our 2025 annual meeting of the town of Rochester to order. I am Dan McKinley. It's been my pleasure to serve as your moderator for the past year, and I'll continue to do so until at least the first article this evening. Before we get started, I want to share an invocation that I've borrowed from the town of Danville. I've read this before in the past, and I hope it'll set a tenor for our evening. Welcome to the Rochester Town Meeting. We have come together in civil assembly as a community and a tradition that is older than our state itself. We come together to make decisions about our community. As we deliberate, let us advocate for our positions, but not at the expense of others. Let us remember that there is an immense gap between saying "I am right" and saying "I believe I am right," and that our neighbors with whom we disagree are good people with hopes and dreams as true and as high as our own. Let us always remember that in the end, caring for each other in this community is of far greater importance than any difference we may have. If you can rise, please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag and our republic. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Come on in, folks. Grab a seat. Town meetings are governed by state law and Robert's Rules of Order. I'd like to remind you a few of the key rules to help the meeting go a little smoother for all of us. If you've not been to a town meeting or are not familiar with Robert's Rules, please don't hesitate to raise your hand and ask questions about how you can do something or say something, and we'll help you through it. Your participation is important. The role of the moderator is to help you accomplish your business expeditiously and fairly. Please raise your hand, and I will recognize you in the order that I see your hand. Please stand if you are able. We don't have microphone runners, do we? We do? Oh, excellent. Great. What's your name, microphone runner? Mariah. Thank you, Mariah. Round of applause, Mariah. You're doing a great job. Thank you. Now, please wait for the microphone. We have a pretty full house tonight, and everyone wants to hear what you have to say. So wait for the microphone, if you will, please. And please address your comments and questions to the moderator, and then we'll direct him to the appropriate person that actually has answers. The business we will conduct tonight can be found in the Town Report on pages four and five. You may speak twice on any article, once when you've been recognized, and a second time if everyone that wants to speak has had one chance to speak. You may speak no more than five minutes at a time, and I'll keep rough track of that. Reading from papers is not permitted by Robert's Rules of Order unless there is a grave need to do so, and we can suspend that rule if absolutely necessary. By state law, election of select board, lister, elective road commissioner, elective water commissioner, auditor, these are offices that must be voted on by paper ballot. Nominations may be seconded as an endorsement, but seconds are not required. Vermont state law stipulates that a candidate nominated from the floor may introduce himself or herself to the voters. For non-election articles, we'll attempt to decide by voice vote. Division of the House, showing of hands or raising may be requested by any voter. If I say it sounds like the eyes have it, and someone disagrees, raise your hand and say, "I'd like to have a division of the House," and then we'll do a show of hands, and we'll count those hands and be more accurate. So you can just call out "division of the House" if you don't like the way I rule on the voice vote. A paper ballot, if requested by seven voters, in the same way, saying, "I request a paper ballot." Seven voters that request a paper ballot, we will honor that, and that's per state statute. Debate on an article can be cut off by calling the question or previous question, but you have to be recognized. You can't just jump up and say, "Call the question." You have to wait for your turn when you raise your hand and are recognized. And it takes two-thirds of the assembly to vote to end discussion. Speeches must be confined to the merits of the question. You will not be permitted to engage in personal attacks. Only warned articles may be considered this evening. Binding action cannot be taken under the Article of Other Businesses, Article 12. But I remind you that a moderator's ruling can be appealed, and I encourage you to do so, as my goal is to follow the will of the Assembly. You need not be recognized in order to appeal. And if appealed and seconded, I would explain my ruling. The voters would get to speak once during discussion, and the ruling would be sustained with a majority yes vote. So please, if you think I'm in error of my ways, please feel free to appeal, and then the Assembly will decide whether we go with my ruling or not. If you think I'm violating Robert's Rules of Order, you may call out "point of order," and we'll stop there and try and figure out what it is I'm doing that you don't approve of, and maybe make a switch, or maybe not. As someone mentioned in the lobby, I do this once a year, so it does not make me an expert, so I'm willing to be appealed and checked on, so feel free to do so. The moderator can use unanimous consent, allowing the Assembly to do business in expeditious fashion rather than following the rules very carefully. And asking for rules would require a motion, a second, debate, and vote. With unanimous consent, I can say, "Let's do this," if there are no objections. If there's an objection, then somebody can say, "I object," and then we would go through getting a motion, having a discussion, and voting on it. And we'll use that right off when we talk about non-voters, non-residents. If there is only one candidate for an office, the moderator can ask the clerk to cast one ballot for that individual so that we are in keeping with the paper ballots required for some officers. At this time, I ask those who are not registered voters of Rochester to raise your hands. Thank you and welcome this evening. We remind you that you cannot vote. You might get all excited about an article and throw up your hand to vote, but please refrain, and unless there's a suspension of the rules, you may not speak to an article. In the past, it's been customary for the good people of Rochester to allow non-voters to share their thoughts and ideas during a debate. And if there are no objections, by unanimous consent, we will allow nonresidents to speak this evening. Very good. At this time, invite the select board. Do you have anything you want to say before we get started? Not required. Kirk White, a representative, is interested in sharing a few thoughts with you, so Kirk, come on up.
So I know it's a busy night. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but thank you for asking me to come and just give you a quick update on things going on in Montpelier. I am your representative for Rochester. I also represent Bethel, Stockbridge, and Hancock. As you can imagine, it's a busy session this time. We have a lot of really big issues that are facing the state. You're probably most aware of the education restructuring of the school system. The governor's put out a proposal on ways to do that, and meanwhile, they're also proposing various alternative ways of financing that that may or may not separate it from the property tax. So at this point, just to update you on that process, I am not on that committee, by the way. That's Ways and Means and Education Committees, and they're doing a lot of work going over the governor's proposals, listening to his ideas. Now, part of the thing that is slowing it down is the governor has big ideas. The details have been slower coming in, and the clock is ticking before we get to the end of the session, and so there's a bit of a crunch to try and find out what he's got in mind. But I won't go into all the nuances of the system. If you want that kind of information, I have it. I was joking. I brought 25 pages of notes here. So if you want to know what his proposals are, what the legislature is considering as pros and cons, really, everything's still on the table at this point. But the intention is that there will be some kind of, at least the beginning of the process this year. The governor's proposal had a five-year rollout, so if you were expecting that the education system was going to be fixed this year, even the governor wasn't proposing that. But the hope is that there will be some movement along it, and one of the things that's included is actually taking some money from the general fund to offset any kind of property tax burden that happens this year, because the system hasn't been changed yet. So part of that, the education restructuring, is career tech education, and that is part in my committee. The career tech education is convoluted, and there are 17 career tech centers in the state, and there's three different governing models and how they're funded, and where they send the kids, and where they meet, and none of them agree. And we're trying to parse that all out, figure out how that works, how we could make that work, and how that would fit into whatever the restructuring of the broader piece. I, last week, spent a couple days talking with the Secretary Saunders and her team. We're trying to work through that whole process. It's, again, it's going to be an ongoing thing, but if you have an interest in tech education, we all know we need more plumbers, electricians, and basically every tradesperson, and we're trying really hard to find ways to get that program moving. The other big things that are being worked on are housing. As you probably know, that housing for your employees is hard to find, and there's a number of plans and structures and things like tax increment financing proposals and those kinds of things to help try and start to address that. An important piece that I think the legislature is all working on is affordability, and that includes oversight and accountability. It's, in my committee, we see pretty regularly, the part of the administration will come in and they'll say, "We want to set up this new program, and we want to hire some people to do that." And our question is always, "Well, couldn't you do that in-house for cheaper?" You know, "What is it that prevents you from doing that?" And often, they don't really have an answer for us. They will tell us they're understaffed, and we're like, "Well, if we hired more staff, could you then do it?" And they usually back off on that. So we're working on trying to accountability. There are some state agencies that don't seem to report what they do, nor their budgets, and we're trying to push that along also to get some accountability. Trying to develop the workforce. Public safety is a big piece of it. Judiciary, again, trying to get more judges to move people through the legal system. There's a big backup in the legal system, and so we're working on that. There's climate resiliency is another piece of it. So we're working really hard trying to get all these pieces together. We're already pretty close to halfway through the session, and so we don't have much time to waste. Being a new session, we had a big influx of new legislators, and that slows things down because they have to learn the system. So the first three weeks are just teaching them how the process works, and so that slows you down. But we're working a lot. We're always trying to come up with solutions to these hard problems, and in that regard, I welcome your thoughts and your feedback, your opinion on things. If you like a thing, if you don't like a thing, if you have what you think is a crazy idea, I want to hear it because that's how we get things to change, is people thinking outside the box. And so always happy to do that. Also, I don't know if you know, but one of the roles of your legislator is what they call constituent services. And that's if you're having trouble with a state agency, either they won't return your calls, they won't get you answers you want, stuff like that. Part of our job is to try and help you do that. Those state agencies will often, we know the person to talk to, and when you've talked to a state agency, you start at the bottom and you work your way up, and we have the luxury of starting at the top and working our way down. And so I've helped a number of people with issues they've had. Sometimes I can't help them, but I do what I can. I just want to remind you that that's available, and it's actually one of my favorite parts of the job, is helping somebody when they, you know. I had a young fellow over in Bethel who tried for months and months to get a cattle crossing sign in his road, and he couldn't get anything. Nobody would respond to him. And I talked to the secretary in charge of that stuff, and literally, I would say, within four hours, I got an email back saying, "We've sent somebody out to his farm. We've located where the sign's going, and it will be up next week." So that sometimes you can really have an impact like that, and that's a part of the job I really love. So thank you. I will be sitting here, listening to your town meeting and getting information, and hopefully learning to who your new select board members are, so they know who to talk to, and I know who to talk to. But if there's anything you need from me, please, please reach out to me. Thank you for your time.
The town of Rochester, Vermont, annual town meeting to be held Monday night, March 3rd, 2025, 7:00 p.m., Rochester School Auditorium. The legal voters of the town of Rochester, County of Windsor, State of Vermont, are hereby notified and warned to meet in the Rochester School Auditorium, 222 South Main Street, in said town, on Monday, March 3rd, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. to transact the following business. If there are no objections, I will not read the entire warning before we start, but I will read each article as we begin, and I'll read each article, whether it's as written or amended, before we would vote on each article. No objections? Let's begin. To elect Article 1, elect a moderator for the ensuing year. Nominations?
I'm nominating you.
Who's you?
Dan McKinley.
Dan McKinley's been nominated. Any other nominations? No other nominations? Go ahead. Then I will ask the clerk to please cast a ballot for, actually, yeah, cast a ballot, one ballot for Dan McKinley as moderator for the ensuing year. Thank you. All right. Article 2, to elect all town officers required by law. One, to elect a select board member for a three-year term. Two, to elect a select board member, a one-year term. Three, to elect a town clerk, three-year term. Four, to elect a town treasurer, three-year term. Five, to elect a lister, three-year term. Six, to elect a collector of delinquent taxes, one-year term. Seven, to elect a library trustee, five-year term. Or eight, to elect a library trustee, one-year term. Number nine, to elect a trustee of public funds. Number 10, to elect a cemetery commissioner, five-year term. Let's begin with number one. Select a select board member for a three-year term. Before I take nominations, I would invite Pat Harvey to say a few words about our outgoing select board member.
I have known Dune since 1986, when my son Dylan rode his BMX bike into Dune's shop. Here we are in 2025. Green Mountain Bikes is a thriving and vibrant business in our town, and Dylan is still hanging out there every year. It has been a pleasure to serve on the select board with the most humanitarian-minded person I have ever been acquainted with. His calming demeanor and level-headedness has brought him to the level of pillar of our community. His biggest challenge during the past 18 years was putting our demolished, divided, and drenched community back together after the Irene flood in 2011. But this was only one of his many projects that have enabled this town to thrive and go forward. Septic system upgrades, highway equipment purchasing, school closings, the list goes on, too much to know. As we bowed him farewell from the select board table, we should always tip our hat, shake his hand, or wave hello as we see him riding through town on his vintage bicycle. I look forward to the ability to once again enjoy conversations on a friendship basis with my old friend, Dune. Be well.
Dune would like to say a couple words.
I'd like to say a couple words. Is it okay if I, well, she read from hers. Can I read from mine? Is that okay?
If there are no objections, we'll let the outgoing, let remember, read from his papers.
Keep it all straight, because there's a lot that I wanted to say. And over the past 18 years, I've had the honor of sharing this responsibility with Norm Pratt, Marv Harvey, Larry Strauss, Jim Bowen, Robert Mayer, Tom Schnabel, Frank Severy, Pat Harvey, and briefly Chad Richardson here. Thank you, Chad. And aside from working with them, I really have to thank my family for all the missed dinners and patience with my angsty over what to say at the next meeting. But it's not always been a pleasure, but it's always been an honor to be entrusted with this position and with these teammates, teammates including our crew on the roads and in the office, which are all indispensable to the functioning of our town. Speaking of the functioning of our town, I offer a big thank you to the members of the Budget and Finance Committee who crunched the numbers again and again and again and again, as well as the many others who volunteer their time and energy in many ways. And I would also like to offer a special recognition of Nancy Woolley, who cares and loves and works for this town in too many ways to mention. I'm thankful for her guidance through the years. As we look to the future here in our small corner of the world, the strength and unity of our community is more important than ever as the structure of our federal government is under attack. Our aging population is threatened by proposed cuts to health care and social security. The management of the national forest that surrounds our town is one of the most recent targets of this attack. We all know stories of the major floods in the 20s and 30s after the forest cover was removed. It already prompts much discussion when carefully planned timber harvests are proposed, while the proposal now appears to be "cut, baby, cut." I call for this community to respond to this new challenge with the unity and compassion and clarity that carried us through the economic downturn of 2008 to 2009, that carried us through the challenges of Tropical Storm Irene, and then through the COVID pandemic. You all may not agree with me on the extent to which we are facing a crisis. Time will tell, I suppose. I encourage you to look to history for examples and warnings. You will see more warnings than you want. If I were to continue on the select board, I would propose that we fly the flag on the park upside down as an extreme message of warning and distress. I hope I'm wrong. Tonight, we'll be here to pick a future. Let's make it one based on hope, though, and not fear. Thank you.
With that, we'll entertain nominations for this select board position for a three-year term. Nancy? Mike Dietzel's been nominated. Been seconded. Yeah, check that. Give it a test, Mariah.
Not on.
Any other nominations? Mike, do you want to introduce yourself, just so folks know you?
You folks hear me in the back? Well, yes, my name is Mike Dietzel. I guess I'm crazy enough to run for the select board. You know, I've lived here in Rochester full-time for 20 years. Coming here was the best thing I ever did. My wife and I, we love this town. We love the people of this town. I've recently, in my professional life, I only work part-time now, so I have some time on my hands. I have the opportunity now to serve, and I'm happy to do it. You know, my professional background, I'm an engineer and an geologist. I clean up contaminated sites for Fortune 500 companies. I'm basically a professional project manager. So I think I have some skills that maybe might come in handy. So it'll be my pleasure to serve. So thank you very much.
If there are no other nominations, we'll close the nominations. Nomination to close, I asked the clerk to cast one ballot for Mike Dietzel for a select board for a three-year term. Thank you, Mike. Number two, to elect a select board member for a one-year term. This is the position that Chad is filling now, that Frank Severy vacated. Nominations?
I would nominate Chad Richardson.
Chad Richardson's been nominated, been seconded. Other nominations? No other nominations? Chad, do you want to say anything? Put you on the spot.
Well, the past couple times, I've passed this up, so I guess I have to jump on. Chad Richardson, as they previously stated, I grew up here and have experienced a lot through the town. I was gone, unfortunately, well, fortunately, unfortunately, through the Irene period, so a lot of you remember that, and I don't. But recently, asked to fill Frank's spot when he resigned from the select board, and I've slowly been digging in, reluctant to speak before I'm actually informed on stuff, so I've kind of been holding back so far and been pretty quiet, but looking forward to getting more involved and digging into the issues.
Thank you, Chad. Any other nominations? No other nominations, we'll close nominations and ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Chad Richardson for select board member for a one-year term. Thank you, Chad. Thank you, Chad. Number three, to elect a town clerk for a three-year term. Nominations? Martha? Julie Smith has been nominated. Seconded. Yeah, a second's not required, but if you really want Julie, then go for it. Yeah. Any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, we'll close nominations and ask the clerk, the same, to cast a ballot for Julie Smith for the town clerk for a three-year term. Thank you, Julie. Number four, to elect a town treasurer for a three-year term currently held by Julie Smith. Nominations? Yes, Sandy? Julie Smith has been nominated. Any other nominations? No other nominations, we'll close nominations and ask the clerk to cast a ballot for Julie Smith for town treasurer for a three-year term. Thank you, Julie. Number five, to elect a Lister for a three-year term. Yes, currently it was Caroline Mayer's office. Nominations? Caroline Mayer has been nominated. You sure, Robert? That's it? Okay. Caroline Mayer has been nominated. Any other nominations? Are no other nominations, we will close nominations and ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Caroline Mayer for a Lister for a three-year term. Thank you, Caroline. Is that clicking coming from my mic or from the speaker? Okay. Number six, to elect a collector of delinquent taxes for a one-year term. This was Becky Klein's post. Nominations? Yes, Nancy? Kristen Lapel has been nominated. Any other nominations? I think none. We will close nominations and ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Kristen Lapel for the collector of delinquent taxes for a one-year term. Thank you, Kristen. Number seven, to elect a library trustee for a five-year term. This was Tony Goopie's post. Any nominations? In the back there? Barb? Natalie Cassidy has been nominated. Any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll close nominations and ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Natalie Cassidy for a three-year, one-year term as library trustee. Five-year term for a library trustee. Thank you. Number eight, to elect a library trustee for a one-year term. This was Vincent Martinez's position. Yes? Robin Beebo Long? Great. Thank you, Robin. Robin Beebo Long has been nominated. Barbara? Vincent Martinez has been nominated. For the... Yeah, number eight, the library trustee for one year. Still on that. So we have two nominees. Beebo Long, Martinez. Any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll close nominations and put this to a vote. Can't remember if I've done a voice vote for an office before. I guess we'll first ask for the ayes for Robin, and then we'll ask for the ayes for Vincent. All in favor of Robin Beebo Long for the library trustee, say aye. All those in favor of Vincent Martinez for library trustee, say aye. Sounds to me as if Robin had more votes there. And Robin is elected for the library trustee for a one-year term. Thank you, Robin. Thank you for your willingness, Vincent, in the past year. Thank you. Number nine, to elect a trustee of public funds for a three-year term. Sandy Pierce had this position. Yes, Sandy? Did you say Sandy's been nominated? No. Sandy? Can you introduce Linda? Or Linda can introduce herself if she would like.
She's very well.
Linda Crosby.
Like that? Okay. I think you could hear me without this.
Not very well.
I really do. Let me, let me give... And then... Is this... Okay, it's on. My husband and I moved here full-time in 2005. We actually bought our house at Hawk in 1992. And then in 2008, we built a house in North Hollow where we live now. It took us about two years after we bought our house in Hawk that we decided to, we wanted to move here and live full-time. Took a little while to get here between jobs and family affairs, but we've absolutely loved it since 2005. Since I retired, two and a half, almost three years ago, I've started volunteering. I am the treasurer for Feeding the Valley Alliance. And I've been volunteering at the library an afternoon a week for, I guess, almost two years now, which I thoroughly enjoy. And I would actually enjoy being more of a contributor to the town.
Thank you, Linda. Any other nominations for the trustee of public funds? Want to thank Sandy for her many, many years serving in that role. Thank you, Sandy. There are no other nominations? Oh, in the back. Sorry, Mike. Mike, Mike?
Hello?
There you go.
You gonna stick that back in my face again? So we enjoyed our working relationship with Sandy, and she contributed a lot. She was the secretary. And so I just want everyone to know that as being a trustee, you know, we don't have a lot of meetings, but it's critical that we, you know, are stewards to the monies that are left by wonderful individuals and that we try to balance that with providing monies to the town. And we'll miss her, and good luck with whatever she's got on her plate next. Thank you, Sandy.
We have Linda Crosby nominated. Any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll close nominations and ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Linda Crosby for trustee of public funds for a three-year term. Thank you. Thank you, Linda. Number 10, to elect a cemetery commissioner for a five-year term. This was a post that Marvin Harvey held for many years. Marvin asked if we could read a note, say he will not be running again for this year. He sent this note on February 20th, 2025 to the moderator. Please read in my absence. "It has been a dedicated pleasure to have served as your cemetery commissioner for over 40 years. Since my term is up this year, I chose not to be re-elected. I give thanks to you for having this faith in me, but it is time to pass the torch." Thank you, Marvin Harvey. Nominations for a cemetery commissioner for a five-year term? Yes, Nancy? Ray Harvey's been nominated. I don't see him running out the door, so I think... Any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll close nominations and ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Ray Harvey for cemetery commissioner for a five-year term. Thank you, Marvin, and thank you, Ray. Article three, shall the voters authorize the treasurer to collect current taxes pursuant to State Statute 32 VSA 4791? I need to move and second this article, and then we'll have discussion. Moved. Judy, move. Need a second? Robin, second? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion? We will move to a vote. Shall the voters authorize the treasurer to collect current taxes pursuant to 32 VSA 4791? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Article passes. Article four, shall the voters authorize payment of real taxes in four installments with due dates being Friday, August 5th, 2025, Monday, November 17th, 2025, Tuesday, February 17, 2026, and Friday, May 15, 2026, by physical delivery to the tax collector before 4:00 p.m. on those dates, with postmarks not accepted as proof of delivery. Julie? August 15th. I'm sorry. Did I say the 5th? Yep. August 15th, 2025. So need to move that and then second it. Judy, thank you. Someone want to second that? There's a second. Can't see Carrie. And if I need to call on you, and I can't remember your name, even though I may have known you for 30 years, please, please forgive me. It happens. But I'll kind of point, and so, thank you. Any discussion on this article? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Article four, shall the voters authorize payment of real taxes in four installments with the due dates being Friday, August 15th, 2025, Monday, November 17, 2025, Tuesday, February 17, 2026, and Friday, May 15, 2026, by physical delivery to the tax collector before 4:00 p.m. on those dates, with postmarks not accepted as proof of delivery. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Article four passes. Article five, shall the voters authorize total highway and general fund expenditures of $1,572,988, of which $1,227,915 shall be raised by taxes. Someone can move this and second it. We'll get into discussion. Yes, Lois moved it and seconded by Leslie. Discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Article five, shall the voters authorize total highway and general fund expenditures of $1,572,988, of which $1,227,915 shall be raised by taxes. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Article five passes. Articles... Article six, shall the voters appropriate $52,313 towards operating expenses of the Rochester Public Library. Moved by Linda Crosby and seconded by Yola. Discussion on this article? Seeing none, we will move to a vote. On Article six, shall the voters appropriate $52,313 towards operating expenses of the Rochester Public Library. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Article six passes. Article seven, shall the voters appropriate $21,420 to continue funding recycling with North Star Rubbish Removal LLC from July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. Someone can move this. John White moved it. Seconded. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll move to a vote. Microphone runner's got it really easy so far, so... Article seven, shall the voters appropriate $21,420 to continue funding recycling with North Star Rubbish Removal LLC from July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Article six... Excuse me, Article seven passes. Article eight, shall the voters approve the transfer of any remaining FY26 Fire Department budgeted funds to the Fire Department Equipment Reserve Fund. Someone move this for us in the back. Tim Crowley and seconded by... Judy. We're slow on the seconds tonight, folks. Any discussion on this article? No discussion, we will move to a vote. Article eight, shall the voters appropriate, approve the transfer of any remaining FY26 Fire Department budgeted funds to the Fire Department Equipment Reserve Fund. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Article eight passes. Article nine, shall the voters approve the transfer of any remaining FY26 Skate Space budgeted funds to the Skate Space Reserve Fund? Moved by Sandy, seconded by Martha. Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion on this article? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Article 9, shall the voters approve the transfer of any remaining FY26 Skate Space budgeted funds to the Skate Space Reserve Fund? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, Article 9 passes. Article 10, shall the voters support the White River Headwaters Pilot Project to create and leave our kids a prosperous, deep soil valley that is safe from flooding led by participating farmers, loggers, and other community members and support by the Land Care Cooperative and the Land Web? I would like to move this one for us. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Yes, go ahead, Gabe. Abe?
Thank you, Abe Collins. I'm not from here, I'm not a registered voter, so I'd ask permission.
Sure, yep.
So I grew up here and I've been a grazer all my life, a farmer, a sheepherder in the desert, a dairy farmer, a beef rancher, and I'm a founder of Land Web, a scientific organization that measures the earth much like an MRI. And I'm a founder, a co-founder of the Land Care Cooperative, made up of farmers around the state. And two farms here in Rochester are members, the North Hollow Farm and Wake Robin Farm. And it's just an honor and it's love for this place. And I really think you have an amazing resource in the farms here who work so hard and grow us this amazing food, but also have this other capacity, which I discovered in my life working around the world, that farmers can rapidly increase biodiversity and topsoil and soak in so much more water. And one implement that we've invented, there's just one piece of the puzzle, is called the Vermont Rip Sower, and that is a subsoiler that seeds. And it's been shown that contour subsoiling can reduce runoff by 50%. So I want to offer instantly, so I want to offer that this pilot project is about reducing the runoff that led to the flooding that was so disastrous in 2011. And we would like to be thinking about how the farms and the forests and the farmers and the loggers can be the front line of creating the security for this valley moving into the future. Thank you.
And the other discussion on this article? No other discussion, we will move to a vote. Article 10, shall the voters support the White River Headwaters Pilot Project to create and leave our kids a prosperous, deep, topsoil valley that is safe from flooding led by participating farmers, loggers, and other community members and supported by Land Care Cooperative and Land Web? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, Article 10 passes. Article 11, shall the voters vote to appropriate the following sums as requested by these community agencies, Central Vermont Council on Aging, $1,500, Clare Martin Center, $1,033, Greenup Vermont, $50, Orange County Parent-Child Center, $150, Quintown Senior Center, $4,925.50, Lifeline Inc., $125, Tri Valley Transport, formerly Stagecoach, $650, VNH, Visiting Nurse Association, $2,400, White River Partnership, $437.50, Women Safe, $125, for a total of Someone like to move this? Martha moved and seconded, Sandy. Discussion on this article? Yes, Catherine? Oh, over this way, Mariah, over this way, and then we'll go over that side. Somebody lasso her.
Hi. I, my name's Catherine Shankman and I work and have worked actually 29 years this month as the case manager for the Central Vermont Council on Aging, serving the Quintown Senior Center. I understand from the Quintown meeting that the Budget and Finance Committee had to have our appropriations in consideration of the tax burden. And I'm not here to ask that the Council on Aging be restored. I don't want to be known as the woman who pushes up our taxes, but I do want to speak for the Quintown Senior Center because I wanted to speak to the appreciation and the nutritional benefit of what this organization does for older, for our vulnerable older adults and also our younger disabled adults. So for many years, the appropriation request has been around nine, between nine and 10, and it's again $9,849. And in the last year, they serve 7,300 meals. They have a brand-new executive director and a new cook and they're doing very well. And I would not want to impact this resurgence of the Quintown Senior Center after coming back from the pandemic by cutting them off the knees with our appropriations. So I am asking that the town consider to please restore the $9,849 of appropriations at the Quintown Senior Center. And one little thing I would like to tell you that's going on with Council on Aging, in case you do not know, all the AAA's area agencies on aging in Vermont have had to comply with a federal mandate, which is called conflict-free case management. And that means that none of the home health care agencies can provide case management to our most vulnerable, those people who are on long-term Medicaid and deciding to live at home. This has resulted in basically a tsunami of new clients. And I just want to say, doing this work, it's unprecedented, the caseloads, as you can read in your town report. I have 58 just in Rochester alone and I serve the Quintown area, but I'm also serving one in Waitsfield as well, because we've been understaffed since the pandemic and it's hard to find people to do this work. So this is just an FYI, not because I'm asking you to increase anything for Council on Aging, but I want you to understand that with this increased demographic of older people, serving them is increasingly a challenge. And I want to thank all of our volunteers who stepped to the plate, the people who deliver meals, the people who help, who notice and help their neighbors, the people who contact me on seven days a week to let me know who needs help. So, thank you very much.
Catherine, just to be clear, you weren't suggesting an amendment to this, you're not...
I'm asking to amend, oopsie. I'm asking to amend the Quintown Senior Center budget only to go to its original request of the $9,849.
All right, so you are asking to amend this. And what is the number you would like it to go to?
$9,849.
Just going to do the math here and see, see what that ends up being. If anyone gets to it quicker than I do, you're welcome to shout it out. Thank you. Now we would add that to the 11,000 total, $4,924. It's $4,923.50? That would be a total of $16,319.50. Yeah, no? Right, so that's an addition of 49,000, I mean 4,900?
49,000.
That's an addition of 4,924. We add that to the 11,000, yeah, it wouldn't be 16, would it? Yeah, so the bottom line would be $16,319.50. So we need a, we need a second on that, seconded by Jeff. Discussion? Yes, Lois?
Lois Bond, I'd like to make two points. Before I came back to Rochester, I was Elder Services Director in Massachusetts for 14 years, so I can appreciate everything you're saying about the deeds of the elderly and those who need that attention and the neighbors who need to help address that issue. I'm also a member of the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, and I recognize how difficult it was for the committee and the select board to look at all of these requests and understand what the impact would be on the tax rate for the people of this town. So I am torn between occupation and being a retiree. I would have to vote no on this amendment in anticipation and appreciation for all the other organizations that are also being asked to cut their expenditures.
Brenda?
Brenda Goopie. I am also interested in taxes. We've lived in this town for 50-plus years and own a home, but we appreciate what our taxes do for us. And we have to remember that we're talking about people that are older, that have far fewer means than most of us do. And we're living in a period right now in this nation where things are being taken away. And as far as I'm concerned, the older people in this town do not need to have anything taken away from them. I think what little bit of an effect this has on our taxes, we should vote to make this change. Thank you.
Other discussion, all the way in the back, Tim, and then Ethan?
Hi, thank you, my name's Tim Crowley. Several years ago, Marvin asked me to sit on or represent the town of Rochester on the Tri Valley Transit, the old Stagecoach. And I agreed to do it because I love Marvin and so we've done that. And in that time, the Stagecoach and the transportation system in Middlebury married, actually at our dining room table officially, in order to carry Stagecoach and Middlebury and to make that all work. And it, and it works very, very well. 2,044 trips in Rochester by Stagecoach, Tri Valley Transit. 2,044 in 2024. That amounts to about 31 cents a trip. I don't know if you caught what Catherine said, but what we've become accustomed to over the years is that, you know, that long list of all these organizations that do stuff for people. The committee, the finance committee, whose work I respect, I've worked on a million finance committees, I really do respect their sensitivity to our tax burden. But what they did was they took everybody's request and cut them in half. And again, I get it, but that was a $650 cut to Tri Valley Transit, who's providing transportation for Rochester residents for 31 cents a trip. So kind of what Brenda was talking about, there are some budget items for which we get a huge bang for our buck. Them ain't the ones I think we should cut. And so while I respect that that low-hanging fruit is sitting there in front of the committee, I get it. 31 cents a trip, 2,044 trips in 2024, I would like to ask that the community consider reinstating the $650 that was reduced for the Tri Valley Transit. For the purpose of getting the biggest bang for our buck, which I feel like we do in so far the three lines that we've discussed tonight. Thanks for your attention.
So we can only address one amendment, hell no, I guess this is... Yeah, yes, this is one package so we can amend each of these numbers, whatever it takes. David, do you have a thought on point of order? Okay. We can, we can, suggestions are made to divide the question, is the term that's used in Robert's Rules. And first, look at the amendment for the Quintown Senior, vote that up or down, and then look at the amendment for the Stagecoach. Good, okay. Thank you, Judy, for that suggestion. So we will do that, we'll first, we'll divide the question. So the, we're going to stick with the Quintown for now, and any further discussion on the Quintown Senior upgrade?
Hello?
Yeah, got it.
Hi, my name's John Lambert, I'm here to make it down tonight, I have other issues that I'm down here for, but I just wanted to speak with Catherine, thank you for your speech on that, but I'm actually here to speak on all of these, because it is our elders. I, I help out a lot of people, it's not just elders, but it's also handicap folks that can't make it down here, I don't see any of them.
Hey, John, hold that mic up, dude.
So I don't see any of the elders or handicap folks that are down here. So just remember that these prices that were cut in half really are supporting your community that can't get to this town. And just take into consideration, we did back in the old times when we had that flood, not have transportation over here as well. So this elder care and/or help really is a big difference in our community, because we are getting older here, including myself.
Thank you, John. So I'm rethinking this, this process here. I think what we're going to do is treat these as separate amendments, we'll do the Quintown Amendment first, and if that passes, vote it up or down, then we'll do the Tri-Town, vote it up or down, then we'll still have the, we'll have a bottom line that we'll vote on when we get back and have an amended article. Any other discussion on the Quintown Amendment? Yes, Rob?
Rob Gardner, I just have the question, is there a relationship between the cuts here and the money to keep the high school heated elsewhere in the...
Direct that to the Select Board. Question is, is this money, these cuts here related to the funding going to maintain the high school utilities?
Yeah, well, I would suppose that being part of the budget as a whole, everything is related, but it's part of several cuts that were made. But yeah, you could, you could make that connection if you want to, you could make it with any part of the budget, really.
Yeah, yeah.
This is a point of order note, I think the simple answer to the question is no, the money to heat the high school was included in the 1 million whatever budget that we voted on earlier, and this is a separate set of appropriations. We can raise them or lower them, cut them or expand them, but it wouldn't affect the other vote that we already took on the town budget. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes, hand raised up there, is that Larry? I can't tell, yeah. Yeah.
Hi, folks. Larry Pleasant. Thank you. Uh, I, I am on the Board of Trustees for the Park House and also have the pleasure to serve as our Emergency Management Director. So as a member of the Park House, I obviously, of the Park House community, I obviously support our elders and all of you. You're the same, and I think the sentiment in the room is moving in that direction. Thank you. Now you can hear me. Uh, as Emergency Management Director, we live in changing times. We don't know what the future will bring. This is not the time to be cutting our safety net. The small amount of money that we spend on these services, we get a lot of bang for the buck. Sorry, I'm rather nervous at the moment. I'll get over it. Thank you, sir. All right, so my, I propose an amendment. I propose that all of the original requests be restored. If we're going to add the majority of it, just do it for all of it. Let's just restore this money and move on. Thank you.
Yeah, we can, we can only handle one amendment, um, at a time. So, uh, pardon me? Yeah, that's third, that's third amendment. So we will, um, um, handle the Quintown amendment, and then we'll handle the, um, Tri-Town amendment, and then we'll handle the Larry's amendment for restoring Tri-Valley? Any other discussion on the, um, Quintown Senior Center amendment to increase that back to, um, past years? Yes, Robert? I'm sorry, Robert? Oh, yes, there was a second on the amendment. Yep, Jeff Gephardt seconded that, that, um, Quintown amendment. Yep. If there is no further discussion, we'll go to the Quintown amendment. And, um, I'm not sure how to do this. I think I'm just going to read, um, the article with, um, the increase. Article 11, shall the voters vote to appropriate the following sums as requested by these community agencies? If there are no objections, I won't read all of them, but, um, the article is, uh, would be amended to increase the Quintown Senior Center by $4,925. So the total of the, of the article would be $16,319.50. All in favor? Those opposed? The amendment passes? Now we have the, the article as amended with a total of, um, $16,300. Yeah. She did, and that's an increase of $4,925. So I added the $4,920, um, $24.50 to the $11,396 to give us $16,319. Please check my math or, or, if this sounds... I don't mind. So we just, um, we're going to call this to a vote. Sorry, David, I can't, unless it's a point-of-order about what we're, about how I'm doing this. All right, go ahead, David. Yes. Thank you. We have to vote on it the way the, the, the individuals asked to amend it. So we are now at a voting point for the Quintown. No, we passed, that passed. So now we are on, thank you. Now we're on the, um, Tri-Valley Transit amendment. The amendment, um, Mr. Crowley, make sure I have this right, to increase the, um, appropriation by $650. So that would be a total of, uh, $1,300. So that would be a total, um, at the bottom of $16,960.50. All right, um, so I'm going to read the article again. Do we have a second on that? Yes, we have a second on that. Thank you. So shall the voters, so for discussion purposes, here's where we are. Shall the voters vote to appropriate the following sum as requested by these community agencies? Without objection, I won't read all of them, but for, um, the amendment is to increase the Tri-Valley Transit by $615. So we would have a total of $16,960.50. Discussion on this amendment. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The amendment passes. Larry, would you still want to put your amendment on the floor? Yes, was that a yes? I'm sorry. Yeah. So we are going to amend the proposed. We need a second on that? Well, lots of seconds, yeah? Second, third, fourth, and fifth. We're going to amend this article to, are we basically doubling all of these? Anyone in, is that what you're proposing, to bring them back to their, where it was? $22,840? Can, uh, thank you, Kristin. Um, can I confirm that, that, that the original numbers basically were double of these? I'm getting a nod from some of the Budget Committee. So if we doubled each of these, it would give us $22,740. Sorry, say it again? Kristin, is that a number you have? Looks about right if we're doubling the 11,369, 396. Uh, one second, I got to get this number down. It's just not sticking in my head. $22,000? $792. Okay. Do you have a, okay, all right. All right, um, so we had this seconded. So the, uh, the amendment that we are about to discuss is, uh, shall the voters vote to appropriate the following sums as requested by these community agencies? If there are no objections, I will not read all the agencies. Uh, that each of the dollar numbers next to those would be doubled for a total of $22,792. That is the amendment on the floor. Any discussion? Seeing Jeff called a question? Um, no discussion, so let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Article 11 passes as amended. Are we, um, good in the notes on how all that happened? We have the final number, and we'll, um, double all those in the list.
Was that the amendment or the whole article that we just voted on?
That was an amendment of the whole article. We had some. We just did vote on the whole article. We had, we had amendment for, for two of the individual lines, which we went through. Those both passed. But then we had amendment on the whole article to double the whole amount. So we voted on that, and it passed. Martha, do you have a point of order or what? Yeah, yes. Yes, someone with a point of order, where I heard it? Guys, so Robert is thinking that we, we voted to amend the article with that increased number, so we need to go back and vote on the article as amended. I, I think you're technically correct.
Since we're doubling the number, we might as well double the vote.
Good. All right, thank you, Robert. That's technically correct. So we have amended the article. The amendment passed. Now we have a new, uh, article, and we will, um, vote on that. So going through the whole thing again. Article 11, shall the voters vote to appropriate the following sums as requested by these community agencies? If there are no objections, I will not list the agencies, nor the dollar figures that have all been doubled, but the total of that amended article is $22,792. So I need a motion. Judy, and a second? Yes, Carrie? Any discussion? Thank you. Connie?
Connie Mendel. I wholeheartedly agree with this motion and the consensus of the town. I just want to honor the, um, the committee that did all the work for the budget in an effort to cut taxes on our behalf. But I'm very proud to be in a town that stands up for their old people, their young people, and all the things that we fear that our government may take away from us. So thank you, Rochester.
Further discussion? Yes, Jeff? Called a question? We will go to a vote on Article 11. Uh, if there are no objections, I will not read through it again, which is... All those in favor, say aye. Those in favor, uh, those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Article 11 passes as amended. Thank you. Should have brushed up on my amendments, uh, training a little bit. Thank you for your patience on that. Moving on to Article 12, to transact any other legal and proper business to be brought before said meeting. Anything from the floor? Seeing no further business of interest, we would entertain a motion to adjourn. Jeff? Motion to adjourn, any second on that? And Carrie? All in favor of adjournings, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, we are adjourned.